No, that's so sweet.
You should be so proud of yourself. Grandma.
All right. All right. Okay. All right, thank you for your patience. We'd like to begin tonight. Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, so we're back on the livestream?
Just leave it going.
Yeah, sorry for the public just joining us on livestream, but we progressed with our agenda through the appointment of our new Sub District Four Board Member Lola Jones. Starting off tonight with our first administrative report is the discussion on the tentative district budget for this coming fiscal year 2023, 2024. Katie.
Hi, everyone. So I don't normally present this until the regular June business meeting, but it caught me a little bit off guard that I'm actually gone that day. So I wanted to make sure to get this in front of you all. It's really pretty much just a legal requirement that we have an approved budget before the end of the year, and when we say tentative, it's highly tentative. We do make some assumptions and estimates and plug those into the budget, but otherwise it's primarily a copy of the prior year's budget along with those placeholders for those changes. And we narrow in on those as best as we can, but there's still a lot of moving parts in the tentative budget that aren't finalized until later in the year, and we don't accept the final budget until the September business meeting. So at the September study session, I'll try to have prepared for you administrative report presentation of all of the major changes, and we will have that document in a more final format for your review. So I did want to just talk about some of the major assumptions just really briefly because there aren't very many, but one of the hardest ones to narrow in on that we did a lot of work on over the last couple of months is the salary placeholder. And there's actually, I don't know, a dozen different calculations that went into the placeholder that's in there. It's actually on the very first page of the expenses detail report that you received. It's like $1.7 million placeholder estimate, and that includes the salary increases from the new UEA contract, the raises for administrators and non-union support staff that were approved in May. It includes the additional financial proposals related to the union contract that were approved. It includes any reassignment savings from the reduction from six to five elementary schools for next school year. It includes retirement savings of those that retired of around $500,000, where we assume that we would replace that employee with someone that's paid less than the retiree, and those are all estimates that get finalized before the final budget. So once the final assignments are input by the Human Resources Department, we actually know the exact salaries, but until then it's just an estimate. So we try to narrow in on it as best we can, and when the final budget comes out, we will have a much better idea of those actuals. The other big estimate that gets more finalized as the year progresses and before the final budget is our property tax levy. This makes up a huge chunk of our revenue stream, and just the smallest swing in the timing of our property tax levy can have a huge impact on our revenues for the fiscal year because our property tax levies are split in half. So if more property taxes are received in May and June, that's going to be less property taxes we receive in FY '24 and vice versa. So the timing of that and until the first half of that year is finalized for property taxes, we finalize that in the budget, and we know exactly how much we'll still receive for the remainder of that levy. And then, of course, the next year's levy for May and June payments is completely an estimate. We have no idea. But the one thing we do know is that there's going to be a 5% CPI increase again, so we can base some of our calculations off of that. So those are two huge fluctuations, but in the end, we have to move forward with a budget, and we just do the best we can, and we narrow in on those estimates as the months progress here, and we'll have a lot better idea by the end of August and beginning of September. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And I did receive a couple of questions from board members, so if you'd like me to speak publicly about any of those, you're welcome to let me know what you found value in.
You did receive questions from board members?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Can you just go over what you, what those were?
Sure. Yeah, I received a couple of questions from Sheri. She asked me about the $11 million deficit that's in the summary page at the bottom, and I'm glad she asked that. I thought it was a really good question because if you look at the funds, the only funds that we really work on the most for this tentative budget are the operating funds, Fund 30, Fund 10, and a little bit in Fund 20, but otherwise, all of the capital projects funds are just a copy of last year that will finalize for the final budget. And the most of that deficit is all in the capital projects funds for projects that we have fund balance for, for spending. So either bond funds that we have in the bank or sales tax revenues we have in the bank and that we have planned spending to spend over last year, and then again, any additional funds for next year. And primarily, those projects are the Thomas Paine renovation and the projects for Wiley that we're starting this summer. So that's all planned spend down of fund balances. And as far as the operating deficits and surpluses, the other question I received from Member Hassanatka is about the $500,000 deficit in the Ed Fund, and there's kind of four parts to that and why that's in there. One is that we don't have our tier funding finalized for evidence-based funding yet, so right now there's zero in the budget for that. Likely, if we're still Tier Two, which we have been for several years, it's going to be another additional at least $350,000 in revenue that we'll be adding to the Ed Fund. Two would be the property tax funding for FY '24 that I already talked about, about the swing of not really knowing. We estimate 47% of the 2022 levy will be received in FY '24, but again, it could be 48%, and just one percentage is a $325,000 increase in property taxes in the Ed Fund. So that's a huge swing when you have these giant revenue sources. So that will get narrowed in as well. And then the other thing is the, there's one more thing. Oh, I wanted to touch a little bit on just the total fund balances of all the operating funds. We're actually looking at a surplus of about $500,000. So that would be between the Ed Fund deficit, but then if you add in the surpluses in the operating and operations and maintenance fund, the TORT fund, the IMRF fund, the debt service fund, and the transportation fund, if you add all those together, it's actually a surplus. And I'm working because a couple of our funds have negative fund balance, and one of our funds has had to consistently rely on loans from the working cash fund to maintain operations. And so I, you have to do this very slowly, but I am slowly working on increasing the tax levies in those funds to reduce those negative fund balances and to balance out the needs for those loans. So it's going to take me several years, but that's why I'm showing an increase in those funds because I'm trying to get their fund balances up. And there's no fund balance on that summary page that I prepared for you, and that's because if there was, you would see this huge negative fund balance in all of those capital projects funds because we're not ready to present that information yet. We won't have our final fund balances for the current year until after June ends. You know, we'll start going into audit and get all of our final end-of-year journal entries input into the system. So at that point, in, you know, end of July, beginning of August, we can start projecting fund balances for the next fiscal year. But without that information, it's not really a full picture necessarily of what you're looking at on that page, that summary page.
Right now.
Yep. Did that help?
Yeah.
Yeah, those were the main questions, I think. Did I cover it, Sheri? Did you have anything else?
So I have one. So the $500,000 deficit in the tentative budget for the, for the Ed Fund didn't really concern me that much, mostly because it's the first year of our new contract, and that's not atypical, right? It's for us to run a deficit in the first year of a contract like that. What has me worried, though, is when Esser funds go away and if we have a structural deficits, not in the '23, '24 budget, but the '24, '25 budget, and what we might have to do in over the next year to address that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely going to be concerned about that, but I need to get through the FY '24 to start projecting for '25. I've done some preliminary projections. The one good thing is that I'm adding $1 million from Esser in salaries back into the Ed Fund this year. All of our technology staff, the Assistant Principal for Thomas Paine are, they were being funded by Esser last year, and they were set to be budgeted by Esser next year, but I'm just trying to soften that, like, cliff fall of Esser ending and having, you know, $2 million in salaries that we still want in our district. And so I'm trying to bring those in more slowly over the, over these next two years. So I'm really pleased that the budget actually has, is only a $500,000 deficit this early in the process. It's looking pretty good.
No, me too. That was, that was a pleasant surprise, actually, for me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all right, thank you very, Katie. So this tentative budget will come to us on the 20th for, for approval.
I have one more thing. I'm sorry. It, just since I won't be here, if anybody does have additional questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, so just send along any questions you have, even if you want to meet. I can go over with you in detail, but a lot more information to come in August and September when we start meeting again.
Yeah, and for all of our new members, school finance is really, really complicated. I'm still learning things every year, and I've been at this for 12 years. So if, you know, please contact Katie, or I'm happy to share what knowledge I have as well if you guys want a primer on, on, on school funding. So we do have a list of action items tonight. 10 dot one was removed from our agenda. So we have a list of, is this consent or not? Oh, just, just do them individually. Yeah, so there's a list of, long list of personnel items, which is typical this time of year. Is there a motion to approve the personnel items? Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Okay, this was for the motion to approve the personnel items.
Got it.
Okay. Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes, there's also, yeah. Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, this, this happened off, while we're off the livestream, but 10 dot one was removed from our agenda earlier tonight due to the fact that we need six board members present to vote on this, and we only have five tonight. So it will be coming back to our agenda on the June 20th meeting. 10 dot three is approval of administrative personnel items. Angie, give us a description.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Thurman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Ms. Thurman is joining us via Zoom from Michigan, and so I'll go ahead and get started. On April 25th, the team of teachers, support staff, parents, and union representatives held interviews for the open principal position at Thomas Paine Elementary. You may recall the board approved Ms. Andrea Jackson to serve as the next principal. I mention this because we had an excellent runner-up for this position, who is Ms. Seema Thurman. The Human Resources Department continued to building a positive relationship with Ms. Seema Thurman, knowing her ultimate goal was to lead and reside in the Urbana community. On May 22nd, Yankee Ridge Principal Dr. Micah Jackson announced that she accepted a district-level administrative position outside of the district, which left us with a principal vacancy during the last week of school. Ms. Thurman spent 10 hours at Yankee Ridge on Tuesday, May 23rd. She drove down really late Monday night, just upon a request the day before, and Seema met with all staff members in the staff lounge over every lunch period on Tuesday, May 23rd. She answered questions that any staff member asked in the staff lounge or on building tours. Seema also stayed after school to meet with parents and families who serve on the PTA. Following her visit, Dr. Avery Tatum and I then surveyed staff to get their thoughts on moving forward with Ms. Seema Thurman as principal at Yankee Ridge, especially due to the timeline of us being in the last week of school and staff getting ready to leave for summer break, and also knowing that we could really lose out on a strong candidate who already had another offer. So Ms. Seema Thurman began her career as an educator in 2000, as a kindergarten teacher in Marion, Illinois, at Washington Elementary. After two successful years of teaching in Marion, Ms. Thurman moved to the state of Michigan and began teaching for, and I'm going to butcher this, Ms. Thurman, Yipsalanti? Yipsalanti, okay. All right. All you Michigan people. Community Schools in Yipsalanti, Michigan, and from, from 2002 to 2017. Ms. Thurman taught second through sixth grade and was rated as a highly effective teacher in the state of Michigan for several consecutive years. In 2013, Ms. Thurman began her administration career as the Assistant Principal of Erickson Elementary in Yipsalanti before accepting a position as the Head Principal of Post-Franklin Elementary for Battle Creek Public Schools. Ms. Thurman loves her new role as an elementary school principal and has led her school to continued success in both reading and math proficiency, with a 45% increase in proficiency score since 2020. Under Ms. Thurman's leadership, Post-Franklin continually maintains the highest family engagement rates in the district. Ms. Thurman is excited to share her passion for academic excellence and family engagement with the Yankee Ridge community. Ms. Thurman holds a bachelor's degree in early childhood from Southern Illinois University of Carbondale and a master's degree in education administration from Concordia. And so it is our deep honor if you, if the board will accept the district's administration's recommendation. Ms. Thurman is something pretty special.
Thank you for that introduction.
Yes.
Angie, is there, is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Langendorf, yes. Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes, welcome and congratulations. We're so happy.
Thank you so much. I feel honored and privileged to join the team.
All right, Ms. Thurman, you can go back to doing what you're doing this evening. Thank you for joining us. We're very excited. Yes, and so Ms. Thurman has family here in Urbana, and I didn't share that, I guess, and I probably should have. And so it has a little nephew, and they live in Urbana, and she is very excited to move here this summer and get started. And so we're very excited to have you too, Ms. Thurman. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
10 dot four is renewal of insurance. So for the introduction, Katie?
Yeah, this is another item that I normally would bring on the June 20th meeting, so I appreciate you accommodating a couple of additional action items tonight in my absence for next meeting. And I'm really pleased to share that our insurance renewal is only going up about 26% for next year because they came in and did an appraisal of all of our properties, and it was like double the values. We were way underinsured. So they worked with us. They actually reduced the, the rate of the, the actual, like, property rate to help offset for the increase in the property, and so that really helped. They worked with us to keep this in, in line with our expectations. All of our other prop, uh, coverages didn't change very much, and, and that was a real surprise to our broker that helps with this package, put this package together, because they're seeing increases across the board in some of these other coverages. So I'm really pleased to share this coverage with you. We have a great relationship with our new carrier, ICRMT, and even the rate that we have for this package at the bottom line for next year is still less than we were paying two years ago, by quite a bit, like $75,000 to $100,000 less than, than two years ago's package, which was terrible, if you recall. We had like $100,000 deductibles, and there's $1,000 deductibles for general liability with our policy, and there's $25,000 deductibles for property, which is like standard, regular, normal insurance that you can count on and rely on. And even though we've had some claims this year, you know, with some of the damage, property damage we had with the pipes bursting at the middle school and the fire of our contents at the central office building, so we've had some substantial claims, but they still want us as a, a client, so we're really happy. And we've been to, Angie and I have both been, they do a member conference, it's a free conference, to help with risk management and help the people that they insure get better at being risk managers, and it's excellent. So we're really pleased and happy to bring this forward to the board for approval tonight.
All right, is there a motion for the floor?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further questions or for Katie? I have a quick one. I mean, is, are there like policy limits on this that are, that are, that are like normal or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and there's also, we also have an umbrella, too, in addition to the regular, so the, the policy limits are totally normal. I think they actually, I have a separate, I don't think the policy limits are on this because this is just the cost summary that I shared, but they're all normal, and they're all the same as last year. So they didn't change anything compared to last year. But in addition to the policy limits for each type of policy, we also have like a $10 million umbrella on top of that, too, that helps with coverages that might exceed one area or another.
All right, great. Any further questions?
I had a quick question. Please explain to me, the, the property values were, were lowered in order to soften?
The rate was lower.
Rate was lower, okay.
Yeah, so they, the first year, because they didn't, we just gave them what our current statement of values, property values were, to establish our policy. Last year, we were a new client for them, and so throughout, in, during the year, it was actually in the winter, Randy helped coordinate. They went to every single one of our buildings, and an appraiser came and like assessed or appraised all of our property and all of our contents, too. And so the value, the total value of our insurance assets doubled. And so they worked, now that we have an appraised value, though, they felt more comfortable with the rate they were charging per dollar of asset value, that that rate went down, to keep the total premium at like a 0.26% increase.
To soften sticker shock?
Yeah.
Is this something?
I was a little, I, we, my assistant, Lyndon, and I were really nervous about this renewal, and our broker, too, to be honest.
Is this per annual, like annualized, this, we, every year, this is reevaluated, so next year it could be?
Yeah, so this is the annual renewal. We do it every single year. We do have one policy that's a bi-annual policy. I think that was the environmental policy at the bottom, that's $30,000. That one we only do every other year, but all the rest of these, we get quotes every year. And there, it's interesting, in the district, there's been a lot of churn of different companies over the years, depending on where we could get quotes, and then we went, we've had some really high claims, and actually, we're getting denied by a lot of companies, and we were just taking whatever we could get, and we wound up basically with this, like, coverage that you don't even ever want to use. I mean, it was really scary for a little while there, and luckily, last year, we were able to get a quote from ICRMT. It's the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, and they're a grouping of local municipal governments, a lot of school districts, but not just school districts, other types of governments as well. And that's who we are now covered by, and they just have a lot of other member benefits in addition to just insurance. So, I mean, we do use some traditional insurance companies, like Liberty Mutual, and, you know, we've had other policies with other vendors in the past as well, but we're really pleased to have this type of structure going forward because I think it's going to be a lot more stable for us going forward. Not going to be switching around a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Let's, roll call, please.
Member Langendorf, yes. Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes, that's the end of our action items. Our first study topic tonight is the school improvement update. Dr. Norton?
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, it is our pleasure, we will be sharing the school, district goals and school improvement plans from Early Childhood Gerber in all of our elementary schools this evening. When you look at our goals, for those of you that are familiar with the, if you look at the second slide, John, previously, we focused on SEL, equity, literacy, and math, and we are continuing to do that, but they are framed under an umbrella now, and you'll see this again with the equity audit. There are the five equity strands. So previously, we had equity as a separate goal because we were doing a lot of focused work in that area with our equity task force and our equity audit and, and the results that you will be receiving at the next board meeting. But now you'll see that equity, as it should be, is embedded in, in all of our work and in all of our goals. So I will review the equity strands and then follow it up with our district SMART goals, and then when our administrators share, you will see their SMART goals, again, under the umbrella of these five equity strands, and they will then share their metrics that they will be using to evaluate progress. It is also important to mention, I know you received a lot of documents to review for this evening, so you received all the school improvement plans and the board packet and the district goals, but it's important to note that this work is not something that is created prior to the beginning of a school year and then tucked away in a file and then forgotten, and then we bring it back again next year. It's continuous improvement, and it's a, it's a work in progress at all times, so we will post this on our websites so that we're transparent with our district goals and our, our school goals, but then we'll be reviewing this constantly as we receive the data from our metrics that we will discuss this evening. So to start off, systems is particularly important, and so systems refer to things such as how we measure attendance, academic monitoring, restorative practices, and clear expectations across all of our schools. Also, student voice and making sure that we're getting our students' feedback on their social, emotional experiences and the culture and climate of our schools. Teaching and learning, so I mentioned literacy and math, but that really impacts all content areas and social, emotional competency as well, how we utilize assessments and academic programming. And then family and community as, as agency and really fostering authentic opportunities. I think the pandemic has made us, and post-pandemic has made us much more aware of that, and we're more creative with how we are engaging our families and utilizing virtual opportunities, but we want to make sure that we are reducing any barriers that are keeping our, our, our families from, from being engaged. And then professional learning opportunities, making sure that, again, we're really intentional and we're providing pressure, professional growth around equity. So looking at systems and how we measure that, well, one way is all of our schools, we have a metric called Panorama Student Access Success. So this is a little bit different than the Panorama survey that I've discussed before, but it looks at four areas, and that's academics, attendance, behavior, and SEL. Next slide. Oh. Yeah, keep going back, I think, John. There you go. Yep, right there. And so if you look at academics, attendance, behavior, and SEL, you'll see some different percentages that mark fair. So Panorama Student Success, academics is considered fair for 20% to 45% or attendance in that sub. Or attendance in that seventy-five to eighty-nine percent range. Or behavior is eighty-five to eighty-nine percent. And SEL is fifty-five to sixty-four percent. So we want to exhibit fair or above in all of our metrics for all of our schools. And then student voice. And again, the way that we measure that is through our Panorama surveys. And we survey our, our students and our teachers for K through two. Um, it's a teacher, um, teachers complete that. It's not students that do that individually, but it's, um, the teacher perspective on that. We received a lot of success at the elementary level on participation. So I'm really, really proud of that. We had ninety-six percent of our students. At the secondary level, we need to work on that a little bit more. So we had fifty-nine percent participation at the middle school and twenty-five at the high school. So you can see that we aren't capturing student voice enough at the secondary level. And some of the feedback that we've received from students is they really need to know, well, why am I doing this? And then what is the purpose and what are the results telling us? So we need to make sure that we are having those conversation, conversations at every level with our students. And also that we're really intentional about when those surveys are administered. For example, at the secondary level, first hour may not be a good time. Do we have long-term subs in place that may not be familiar with how to get our students on? So we have to think of, of, of those variables and also start at the beginning of the survey window. And so that we're not procrastinating until the very last day or two, so we can catch up any makeups. And make sure that we're really getting, um, our students engaged in that process. And looking at our third SMART goal for teaching and learning, and again, we measure this with math for, for literacy and for math, for reading and math. And so previously, and this was even advised with our ISBE consultant that, that we meet with, our, our schools that are designated. Previously we, we looked at, uh, percentiles and students that were at the sixtieth percentile. And we were advised to do that because it's a predictor for how our students will perform on IER, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. So now that we are administering this assessment and we completed our, our second year, we're getting smarter every year. Whoops, as we, as we do this. And now we can still measure it by percentiles, but we want to look at individual student growth. So you'll see that our goals are framed around individual student growth. The reason why, so for example, for third grade, all of our students may not be coming in at third grade. So they may not be at third grade level by the end of the year, but we do want to measure are our students making growth? And so we can also look, look at that across all student groups. And so, um, looking at that in particular, we want to make sure that every grade level is making growth and that we're seeing that. And that hasn't been the case. Um, so that moving forward, we'll be looking at that more and more. You'll see that broken down by each individual, uh, school as our students share their, their growth goals. And then family and community is agencies. I, I mentioned, we want to make sure that we vary our options for our families. Um, our families may all not, may not all be comfortable coming within our, coming to our schools. So we need to be, um, very creative with our location. Also remove any barriers that may be getting in the way, such as transportation for attendance and, and things of that nature. And then our, our final SMART goal is professional development, ensuring all staff are provided with varying learning opportunities for growth. Um, on contributing to educational equity. And so as you know, we, our, our, um, staff are required to do mandated trainings each year. And those are videos, but that's not what we're talking about here because it's not compliance. It's not just checking a box to make sure that it's been completed. But we want to vary those opportunities and make sure our staff are really engaged around the work in equity. Okay. And so for our first.
Actually, Kim, before we go on, uh, if you could dial, go back to the percentages with regards to what, yeah, the fair percentages. So it kind of strikes me that, so where do these numbers come from? It seems that when I look at the academic score, right, twenty to forty-five is being fair. That seems awfully low just intuitively. So could you, I guess give more context to that for me, please?
Right. That is how Panorama Student Success measures that. And so they'll look at a lot of different factors. Um, we also have, as we look at, uh, students, uh, standard reference learning. Um, we, we don't have all of our schools on an A, B, C, D or F. So we're looking at things a lot of different ways as we're measuring, um, students' academic performance across the board. So yeah, as far as Panorama metrics, those percentages that constitutes fair and the students that are on grade level. Or, um, on track academically vary by those percentages that, of what constitutes fair in each one of those areas.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for the student voice is I'm assuming at the elementary level, it's the teacher working with the students on responses? Is that?
It, it, well, for K through two, that's teacher perception. So the teachers complete that. And then for three through five, it's the students are completing the survey. And then the same for six through eight and nine through twelve. But it's a, a little bit different when you have the same students all day, one teacher doing the survey during this time. For example, for grades three through five and for, um, secondary, it may be this class period. And so.
But it is always offered at, like during the school day to try to encourage the kids to do it at that time?
It is, absolutely. But I can say, looking back, that, um, when we try to get to the root cause, why maybe our students, we didn't have more. That were participating at the secondary level. It may have been that, um, we were waiting until, in some cases, at the end of the benchmark window. And then there wasn't time to capture more students through makeups. Or maybe, you know, like I said, there were long-term subs in place. Or we did it first hour, or maybe students were trickling in. So we have to consider all of those things when we plan in the future.
Any other questions for Kim before we move on to early childhood? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So while Principal Lad and, um, Ms. Madigan are making their way to the microphone. I did want to note for, just for the board, um, Dr. Norton mentioned the Equity Action Plan. So we did receive the final version of that on Friday from Dr. Dubiel. Um, however, I did not want to send you a two-hundred-page document in addition to all of the, uh, board, uh, documents. That you had to review, um, for this meeting. So tomorrow you will be receiving an email from me, um, with the full, um, equity audit. So I, Dr. Norton mentioned some of the goals are included in this. So I didn't want you to think we were withholding information from you. We did receive it. Um, she actually has also created, um, kind of a document to collect board feedback that I'll also share with you. Um, it, 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 it's just basically a document where you can go in as you're reading the plan and add questions. So when she comes to present on the twentieth, um, she can make sure that she's addressing your questions. And you're not just kind of, um, asking her those questions on the spot, that she can have a little time to research, um, more in depth. Um, and have something, uh, ready to present when she comes on the twentieth. So I will share the link to that as well as the document tomorrow. I was kind of holding it back from Friday to, until we finish tonight's meeting. Because I really wanted you to focus on the school plans. Um, and that would have been a lot of weekend reading. So, all right.
Good evening. I'm Beth Lad. I'm the current principal of Urbana Early Childhood. Yesterday was my official last day there. Um, and this is one of my last official duties as the principal there. And I just wanted to thank each of you and celebrate the work that the staff there are doing. And honor, um, they're welcoming me there three years ago. And, um, I just really appreciate the culture and climate of the school, the hard work that they're doing to prepare our students to enter our kindergarten buildings. And thank you for the opportunity to have served there for three years.
So I'm Katie Madigan. I'm the assistant principal and I will be continuing in that role next year. And so I will present the plan for next year. First, I just wanted to give a quick update on some of our goals from last year. We had, um, our first goal was about students, um, identifying and managing their emotions and behaviors. And this was based on a pre and post questionnaire that our teachers did. Um, we had eighty-eight percent of our students increased in their ability to manage their, um, emotions and behaviors. Ten percent stayed the same and about two percent regressed. Um, we had two goals focused on, um, our academics. So attaching meaning to print numbers and, um, showing vocabulary, print familiarity with print and vocabulary in the classroom. And, um, we met these goals. They were mostly based on compliance for last year because we were expecting to be monitored. Um, and then our fourth goal was about our, um, this is the one we're probably the most proud of. All building staff would participate in environmental print audit for inclusive language and representation of all stakeholders. And, um, we are proud to say that we all did that. Every person in our building participated. From, um, Beth and myself to all of our teaching assistants. Um, some of our highlights from the year are that we update, updated and strengthened our MTSS program and procedures. Um, to get our students identified who might need additional, um, interventions. We did some professional development around, um, sensory regulation and gross motor. Um, we focused on some classroom walkthroughs for math and literacy on, um, print materials and, and sharing those ideas. Um, based around ECHRS, which is our early childhood environmental rating scale, which is what, um, our program is monitored using. Uh, when the ISBE, um, designated people come and, uh, monitor our program for quality. We, um, created a library of resources for embedding numerical literacy that's shared with all of our staff. We participated in some professional development on vocabulary, print awareness and support of our multilingual learners. Um, all of our classroom teachers were given op, multiple opportunities to observe other classrooms. And then our environmental print equity audit, um, we created a tool. There wasn't anything when we started this process to find out there that was what we were looking for. So we created our own. Um, and then we audited registration and screening paperwork, bulletin boards, newsletters, social media and building signs. And, um, really had some thoughtful discussions around all of those things and have some plans for the future moving forward. So that was kind of our twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And so based on some of those things, we've come up with four goals. Our first goal is about increasing the average overall score on the ELS. ELS is the Early Learning Scale. That is the, um, assessment system that is recognized by ISBE for preschool for all programs to use. It's one of the approved systems. And so we're going to focus on item number seven, which is oral language. Um, because oral language is the foundation of early literacy. Children learn through their oral language interactions with adults and other children. And they use in, these interactions to build their knowledge of the world around them, describe events and extend their vocabulary. Research, research has shown that young children's oral language, especially their vocabulary development, has a strong relationship to later reading achievement. And so we're really going to focus on, um, read alouds and vocabulary inclusive of all the languages and cultures that are represented in our school. Which, um, can be somewhere between thirteen and twenty every year. Um, and so we're going to work on how we can bring all of those home languages and home cultures into our classroom every day. Our second goal is about increasing the overall average score on ELS, item one, which is number and numerical operations. Um, so I'm just going to read you the little research base behind this. Um, during the preschool years, children display a natural inclination toward exploring mathematical. Formal understanding of number and numerical operations comes as they experience activities and work with materials in the preschool classroom. That encourage counting, ordering and reading and writing numbers. Children's understanding of many different number concepts is developed as they engage with these materials. Exploring and solving problems posed by the teacher or on their own and with peers. And so we're really focusing on counting, reading and writing numbers, and then starting some informal addition and subtraction. And so our, um, some of the things that we're going to focus on next year are utilizing Janet Moore's professional development a little bit more. Um, engaging in number counting across languages represented in the classroom. Um, encouraging the use of math and daily events and understanding written numbers, and then expanding our use of number talks. And so our third goal, um, is very similar to what we did last year. But we are, um, still looking at identifying and managing one's emotions and behaviors. And we want to continue to work on that skill. Um, we are probably going to use the same, it's a questionnaire from the Zones of Regulation that we've modified for our program. And we would like to continue to see growth on that. Um, and so we're going to keep working on our referrals for the MTSS process. Um, documenting our problem-solving conversations through our collaboration meetings, implementing second step with fidelity in all classrooms. Um, and then that might include the review of our current second step scope and sequence and integrating that with Zones of Regulation. And then continuing our trainings for PBIS, second step in zones, um, and culturally responsive, social emotional practices. And our final goal is that, um, UECS will maintain a monthly average attendance above eighty percent. Um, I'm really proud to say that last year, um, only one month did we not meet this goal. And that was in December and it was seventy-nine percent. So, um, and this is significant to us because early childhood is non-compulsory attendance. So we can't make these students come to school and we rely on their families. And, um, and we have created our own attendance system. We are not using Panorama, um, Student Success for, for us. So we created our own program and, um, our own attendance tiers of support, which I'd be happy to explain to you at another time. I worked really hard on that. Um, and then some individual family support plans. Some of those really targeted, uh, culturally responsive ways that we address the needs of our families. And so we would like to continue doing that and make sure that all of our families and students are coming to school as much as possible. Because it sets the stage for future attendance. Any questions?
Sorry. Yeah, board members, any, any questions? All right, all right, thank you very much.
Okay. And as Ms. Rones coming up, um, I know as we're speaking, you'll hear a lot of different acronyms. And so if you look at the last page of our district plan goals, there is a little, um, key there that will, like MTSS, multi-tiered system of support. Um, to explain some of those. But if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Rone. I'm the principal at Gerber School. Which, as those of you who have been around the board for a while know, is a collaborative between Cunningham Children's Home and the Urbana School District. Uh, we serve the students who are residentially placed at Cunningham Children's Home. Um, so we are a very unique environment. So you will see that woven through our goals. Our goals are, are, are similar to my, uh, elementary peers. But we have some differences just because of who we are and who we serve. Um, so our first goal is our SEL goal, goal, our social emotional goal. And this is one that, that has really been a consistent theme for us in school improvement plans across the years. Um, because of who we are and the students that we serve. And really trying to, um, work through our social skills curriculum and build our kids' capacity for making successful transitions into real world settings. Um, so our teachers have worked over the years to fine-tune, um, a personalized social skills curriculum for our school based on what we see as the needs of our students. Um, and then last year, uh, we really tried to quantify that, um, for our school improvement plan. Um, because one of the, the quirks of our school is that, um, most of our students are in, uh, the DCFS system. And they have a very high mobility rate. And once they leave us, we don't always know what their outcomes are. Um, so it's very difficult for us to get some of those external outcomes on our kids. So we were trying to do some internal, um, data collection on how we were doing towards building those social skills. Um, that we saw as high needs in our population. those social skills that we saw as high needs in our population. At the end of the year, my team and I were like, mm, this measure needs some more work. So that's an ongoing goal for us, just to fine-tune our measure. Because we found in the pre-assessment, often kids thought they knew stuff, and they would rate themselves really high. And then as we went through each quarter's curriculum, they'd be like, oh, I don't really know how to communicate with other people. I don't know how to express my feelings in an appropriate manner. So we need to have a better scale for that. So that's a work in progress for our school improvement team and our teacher team. Our next two goals are academic goals. We have a reading goal and a math goal. And you'll see that the metric we use for that is the MAP assessment, just like the rest of the district is using. However, because of our unique population, we have to look at it a little bit differently. It's not unusual for us to just have one student in a grade level, or maybe seven students at this grade level. So we don't have the kind of population where we can look at, you know, a larger scale. We really have to break things down into the individual student level. And so our reading and math goals are really reflective of that and reflective of the fact that our students are in special education. They've also moved around a lot and experienced a lot of trauma. So the majority of our young people are pretty significantly below their grade level peers in reading and math. So we've made some tiered goals there to try to move them forward based on where they are currently. And the RIT scale that we reference here is one that MAP has that helps us really look at some of the finer points of growth. And we were excited to see, you know, this is the second year that the district has done the MAP testing, and we were excited to see that, that we're moving forward with some of our young people and, and some of our young people that really have been struggling in reading and math. And so it, it's really exciting, and we're, we like having a consistent measure that we can look at to see how that growth is going. Our last goal, attendance is a little different for us. Our kids live on the Cunningham campus, and Cunningham residential staff walk them to school every day. So we don't have some of those like grander attendance problems that some of my peers have. However, the, the kind of tangent skill that is problematic for us is still time out of class. And, and for our kids, that's for different reasons. It's often for those social, emotional, or behavioral reasons. And so that is something that our program has consistently tracked for individual students, and that's something that we really want to focus on hard this year. Because if kids aren't class, aren't in class, whether that's because they didn't make it to school on a day, or whether they're in the social work, worker's office every day having emotional meltdowns and not learning how to regulate themselves, they're missing valuable instruction. And we can't move forward on goals two and three if the kids aren't in class getting instruction from our teachers. So that's why we are working so hard on making some strides in our time in class. Do you have any questions for me?
Board members, any questions? I just want to put in a plug, as each of you are visiting all of our schools, please don't forget Gerber. It's a wonderful facility and with wonderful people.
And we love to have you guys come visit.
Jennifer, I just wanted to mention, just for the board, because we do have new people. About, how many students do you serve at Gerber?
So we, we tend to have about 40 kids. So it's a very small school. We serve elementary through high school age kids, so it's a wide range. But we really try to be developmentally appropriate for all of those age ranges and try to work towards the goal of moving kids back into a more traditional educational setting.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Yeah, okay. It's hard to tell on this side if you could ask. So it is my honor and privilege to be here this evening to present before you. My name is Danielle Jackson, and I'm the principal of Dr. Williams Elementary School. Before I get to this, I just want to say that everything that we do, although I am here smiling before you to represent the work of our team and our school, it does not come without the endless, tireless work of our staff. Everyone in the building, all of our teachers, all of our teaching assistants, all of our sped case managers. So the work that I'm going to share with you really is from all of the things that they're doing each and every day. And so why I want to present this to you and talk about what we've been doing, it is not just because of the things that I'm doing. And I also want to give a huge shout out to our school improvement team, who has helped me come up with this plan to share with you tonight. Because again, they help come up with the ideas that we present before you as we continue to work on that plan throughout that, the school year for that living document. So throughout the school year, one of our focuses, and it will be as well next year, is on utilizing high-leverage teaching practices. So research-based practices for instruction and learning across all of our areas. So I'll talk a little bit about what our professional development plan has looked like this school year, which led us to where we were with results and where we hope to go for next year. We are an Illinois Empowered Designated School, so I have the privilege and honor to meet with the representative monthly to talk about our PD plan, talk about the changes that we're hoping to see, and what our current data is showing us. With that, we have been able to do some differentiated professional development offerings. We've been able to work with the director of bilingual multilingual programming, Lupe Ricconi, in order to bring the Illinois Resource Center to our school district in order to provide professional development that are focused workshops for multilingual and multicultural learners. So we want to make sure that we're servicing our entire program. We've also had offerings through the ROE related to shifting the balance, as well as the math offerings both at our building level and throughout the district related to math practices, as well as offerings of Janet Moore. We have then gone and looked at, and then what? We still needed to provide a number of options and opportunities for social emotional learning. We had a series on engagement that incorporated culturally responsive teaching, equity, as well as social emotional learning, and that was offered to staff with a huge emphasis and focus on our staff who teach outside of the full instructional. So our fine arts teachers, library, and PE teachers had an opportunity to participate in that PD, while also general education, general teachers were invited as well. So we were really excited because we feel like if we can take all of those strategies, it's going to have positive impact on our data. So with that, I'll get to that. But I just want to give you our picture and our background, because I can come read the slides, but you've already read that. I think it's important for you to know what we represent. You often will hear, well, Dr. Williams is a designated school. There's a lot behind that story, and I want to make sure I can give you a picture of that, because we're not just the numbers that come up and where our students are performing, because the impacts of COVID will continue to impact us for years to come. So we know where we're performing. We have positive mindset that we're going to continue to improve, as we've seen we have also done this year. But we want you to know that we have amazing things happening at Dr. Williams, and we hope you'll come and see them. We do look to improve our MAP results, both in literacy and math. So by May of 2024, we hope to have 35% of our students meeting their growth projection in the area of English reading on our ELA assessment, as well as 30% of our students meeting their growth projection in Spanish reading. And so we looked at our metrics and where we were performing, and while those numbers are slightly different, we wanted to make rigorous goals that we felt like were also attainable based on where students performed at the end of this year. That is the only reason there is a difference in variance in that goal. Related to math, we are looking to see that by May of 2024, 40% of our students will meet their growth projection in the area of math as seen on our MAP assessment. We were really excited that we were at 21% and between 20 and 15% on that, because before we've been coming and looking at numbers like 4% or 9%. So in looking at the growth, where a student starts and where they end, really feels much more natural to what we want to focus on. So we're really excited that we've moved in that direction. With relation to social emotional learning, we also utilize Second Step in Zones of Regulation, and that's incorporated into our daily instructional practices, where we want to continue to increase the ways in which students are using these skills in real-life situations. So our goal is that by the spring of 2024, as seen on our Panorama school results for third through fifth grade students, those are the ones, as Dr. Norton explained, they get to self-assess, they get to give their input through the survey, that they will demonstrate a 10% increase from 45%, which was the results in May of 2023, to 55% of students reporting that they remained calm even when someone was bothering them. And we know even as adults, that can be very tricky. So we're hoping that students will be able to do that, but recognize that they're doing that. And then we also want to see an increase from 13, of 13 percentage points, from 57% to 70% of our students who are able to clearly describe their feelings. The Zones of Regulation helps us identify our feelings, and we want to be able to communicate that so that we can get the support that we need. We all utilize calming spaces, but I have to recognize how I'm feeling and communicate that in some way so I can get the support I need from my teacher. And then related to attendance, we went and looked at our Panorama student success in order to get our general attendance rates. And so when Dr. Norton was talking about fair, we went beyond that and looked at the critical attributes. And so we had 10% of our students who were indicated in the critical attendance area. So we're looking to increase their attendance and have that number go down to 6% of students or less. That would be great. But we wanted to try to at least get to 6% of students indicated in that critical category, which was more than, missing more than 80%. I mean, I'm sorry, not attending a full 80% of the school year. And then one of the things that I'm really excited to tell you about are our highlights. It kind of started with where we went with PD. But I also want you to know that we're a warm, welcoming school climate. I hope that anytime you walk in, that you feel that positive energy. I've felt it since I was a kindergarten parent at Dr. Williams, and I continue to feel it still this day. And I am still a parent at Dr. Williams. Some of, some of the fun and educational highlights at our school are that we do have a school garden. I know that there's been presentations related to that, and our school garden has continued to grow throughout this year. This year, our instructional coach established a garden club, and we had 70 students who chose to give up time of their lunch period to go in and learn about gardening and taking things from seeds to full plants, how to nurture and develop and cultivate food items, as well as all the things that go into gardening. And then we had 311 students. We have approximately 450 students each year. We had 311 of our students recognized for their positive character throughout the school year, throughout our character, character trait breakfast celebration. We had a Battle of the Books Club, a dance team. We had a variety of Faze events that were hosted in order to engage families around the academics centered on literacy and science. One was connected to our garden. And then we also, the Faze team contributed to the garden. We were able to do a dedication and a memorial, a memorial garden, sorry. Excuse me, to honor a teacher that we lost this school year. So it was, it's an amazing, it's an E, so the garden is shaped in, in an E to represent Ms. Emerald Coleman, who passed away during the school year. So I plan on sharing some pictures and highlights so that you can see that, but also invite you to come over. So I try to keep my composure. I'm happy to answer any questions. I will bounce right back, but that's just a tricky thing for me to be able to speak to.
Board members, any questions?
On my visit to your school, I was overwhelmed, but when I saw the band program, the mentor program, I just happened to kind of go through it and see it at the time, and I was really impressed with that program, and that should be included as well. And they are looking for volunteers for the summer gardener, gardening program, if anyone's interested in helping out, so.
Anyone else question, comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Hello, everyone. For those who are new, last year, I was very new to this position. I am Michelle Turner. I'm the principal at King School. So I was a big father dear in headlights. So I am so glad to have had the opportunity from this previous year, and I am anxious to share our goals with you. So our first goal, and, and that's one of our highlights, we will increase our student attendance in our panorama that we've talked about from 91% to 93%. As we looked at the panorama of student success last couple of weeks, our average daily attendance was 91.8. And that is very, very good for King School. That was one of our main goals, because last year, we were not close to 90%. And on average, we had 30 to 40 kids extremely tardy every day. And so that was one of the main goals, is to get our kids at school ready to learn. So that's our goal for this year, to bump it up to 93%. But on average, a lot of our students are there 91% of the time, and I'm very proud of that. Our SMART goal number two is, along with the student voice, we will increase the panorama favorability rating and supportive relationships from 86% to 88%. Self-management, 63% to 65%. And social awareness, 62% to 65%. So in self-management and social awareness, we did drop this year, and so that will be one of our biggest goals, to exceed the 65% as we move forward. SMART goal number three, and I have to apologize to Ms. Norton and the board. For some reason, SMART goal number three is our reading goal, and SMART goal number four is our math goal. Somehow that got switched, so I'm so sorry. When looking at our MAP reading assessment, King students will increase the number of kindergarten through fifth grade students meeting their projected growth from 27% to about 81 students to 32%. When comparing our numbers fall to 23 to 24. And so as you know, with any goal, there are a lot of steps that we have to take and to ensure that we are meeting the goals. So we are, as a building-wide, incorporating systems the very first day of school moving forward. And our, our SMART goal number four for math is that we will increase first grade through fifth grade, meeting, fifth grade students meeting their projected growth goal from 43%, which is about 129 students this year, to 48%. And so of course, our goal is to exceed that. I'm really anxious and excited about our new math curriculum that we will, we will be starting this year. And our goal is for all of our teachers to teach with fidelity so that we can really see the impact on our school improvement, our school improvement plan and within our scores. A few highlights, international dinner at King School. For those who don't know, it's, it's a big deal at the end of the school year where many different families are able to prepare dishes for King School. It was able to return this year, and we were really excited because it hasn't been at King School since 2018, and we had a great turnout. And our biggest highlight is over 70% of our stu, our families being engaged in the activities and learning at school. Another highlight, which I didn't want to mention, but I do want to mention, it, it may seem as a negative, but at our building, it turned into a positive, but But one-third of our classroom teachers were long-term subs. So that was about 125 students overall. But we were able to maintain learning and continue throughout the school year, making sure that the long-term subs and our classroom teachers had everything that they needed so that the best interests of our students were always in mind. I just wanted to highlight that because that was a big deal. We lost a certified teacher first semester, we lost another teacher second semester, and we were still able to overcome a lot of these challenges by showing great improvement. And I really thank our students, families, and staff members for working in those conditions and staying on a positive road because it could have went a different way. So I would like to thank our staff for being there because we did not have a lot of staff absences, and that's always a good thing. So I would like to highlight that. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Hello, good evening. Welcome back to all of our previous members and welcome to our new ones also. Thank you so much for joining us today. It's always a pleasure to be here. As I recall, I think this might be my fifth time being here now, possibly. So, but it's always a little nervous, you know, around the stuff. So we do want to go over the highlights first, and Ms. Opranek is going to share those highlights because it's, like Daniel Jackson was saying, it's not the data, it's not the numbers, it's all the other things that go behind the scenes that we do daily to keep our building functioning and our students learning, but also building those positive relationships. Many of you know me already, some of you don't. I always encourage you to come visit our building, get to know the leaders in the community, the leaders in the schools. It's about relationships. So if I can build a positive relationship with my staff and my students and my families, that's a huge plus for me, right? So it starts there. Ms. Opranek?
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Opranek, Kalad Opranek, the Assistant Principal at LEO. First, I want to thank you all for serving on the board. I have watched many late nights, and I know that it sometimes is a thankless job, and I know that the pay is not that great. So we appreciate your time being here and serving for our students because that's why we're all here. It's my first year at LEO, and so I'm super excited to share all the highlights because it is a team effort at LEO, as with Oliver Bena, being a first-year administrator and having support of Adriana, but even the people at Central Office. I never felt bad picking up the phone to call and ask questions. I was always greeted with a fine, like a supportive answer. But let's get to the highlights of LEO. So excitedly, our daily attendance was at 90%. We continue to have focus on SEL supports for students, whether we're using Second Step or Zones of Regulation. But even during our staff meetings, we had morning meetings with our staff to encourage staff members to participate in a morning meeting format so that they could take those activities and games back to the classrooms as well. Ongoing professional development for our math curriculum, Janet Moore was extremely helpful this year. And we've had a great turnout with teachers signing up for summer math trainings for this new illustrative math curriculum that we are getting in the fall. Even one of our new hires went to one of the trainings this past week, so that was exciting. Our PTA and family events have been really well-attended. The PTA has been supportive of family engagement nights and promoting those along with our SEA and Family Engagement Coordinator. So I think all of the community supports and the wraparounds that we have has really given LEO a good foundation to start with our goals.
And we also want to highlight too that we have continued community members, not just families and parents coming in to volunteer on a daily basis and in different classrooms. They have built positive relationships with teachers who have been there for a very long time. We also had our K through 1 iRead iCount program headed by Ms. Uskali. So that had a great turnout of community members coming in both times to support our students. And then K through 5, overall, America Reads, America Counts, that was our program that had kind of fallen through the cracks with COVID, but we've managed to bring it back. And having that connection to the U of I and using their resources is always a great thing for us at LEO School because we don't get those extra funds to have these extra programs where we pay people to come and do different things with our students. So we always welcome any kind of volunteer work, anybody who wants to be interested in coming in and supporting our students and teachers in that way. So now we'll go over our goals that we've created with our school improvement team. Just like Ms. Danielle Jackson had shared before, everything that she said, I second all of the things that she said. This is a lot of work behind the scenes where, with a lot of team members coming to the table together, coming up with the ideas, working live document that we continuously work to improve throughout the school year. If some of the things aren't working for us, we go back to the table, we say, how can we make this better? How can we make this work for our students where we are showing growth and progress? So I do want to say that we are going to continue with our building of relationships and having that growth mindset of all of our students are able to do the things that we put in front of them. So with our first goal, LEO School will increase student attendance, as indicated in the Panorama survey, from 90% of the school year, 2022 to 23, to 95% by the end of the school year of 2324. And we've always had great attendance, but that doesn't mean that there's things that we can't improve on. And one of the things that our SEA took upon herself doing with our social worker and our parent liaison is targeting some of those students that were at risk for the critical of missing a lot of days and providing extra incentives to come to school, to look forward to coming to school and having those people that they can connect with. Our second goal, as of spring 2023, students in K through 2 scored 50, in the 59 percentile, and students in 3 to 5 scored 72% in the area of self-management, as described by Panorama. So LEO School will increase student self-management by 5%. So while we have sometimes as adults difficulty self-managing ourselves, you know, when like we were saying before, when kids are bothering other kids or even when kids are triggered by certain things, it's hard for them to do that. So we're going to continue to model those things in our class meetings with Zones of Regulation, incorporating all of those things that will help our students increase. So that is what we're going to aim for, for the spring of 2324 school year. Our third goal is for reading. So as of May 2023, 80 out of 203 students, about 39% in first through fifth grade, met their growth projection in the area of English reading. As of May 2023, 43 out of 150 students, which is approximately 27% in the first through fifth grade met their growth projection in the area of Spanish reading. So by May 2024, 50% of our students will meet their growth projection in the area of English reading, and 40% of the students will meet their growth projection in Spanish reading on the NWE map assessment. So these are goals that we set for ourselves to target for our students, which means that we do need those community supports coming into our schools and providing the extra support to our teachers. And like King was saying, some of our spots are filled with subs sometimes. But even our subs are amazing at what they do. So I do have to highlight some of those things that our subs, having them consistently in the building, learning the things that we do and getting their feedback as to how we can support them continuously, helps us meet these goals too. Our last goal is our math goal. So as of 2023, 99 out of 334 students, which is about 30% in kindergarten through fifth grade, met their growth projection in the area of math. By May 2024, 40% of our students will meet their growth projection in the area of math on the NWE map assessment. Again, we continue to target these goals, these academic goals, but it all starts with the building of the relationships with our students. Students want to be in the buildings learning. There is not one student that can say, I don't like school, right? We all start in kindergarten. We want them to be able to have that joy for learning as adults and as educators. So we continue to come together to help our communities continue to grow. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
As I'm reflecting, and it's not just at LEO School, but all the schools that have been represented today, when you end up at the end of the year with, I'm trying to find, in reading you said 39% at the end of the year? And the next year you wanted, oh. Well, whatever, whatever you're comparing May through May, but we all know during the summer, there's a lot of regression. And don't know what any of the schools are doing to help with that because you're not really trying to increase it from last May. You're going to have to increase it from the regression that starts in August. So you have a bigger challenge than what indicates here.
Correct, and that's where some of our special programs come into play. So at LEO, we are hosting Splash, a 21st century grant that we are still going to maintain for one more year after this year. So that's very helpful for our students that normally would not get the special programming or don't have the extra money to join those camps that some of our other kiddos can.
And what is that?
Splash.
Oh.
Yes, Splash.
During the summer or?
During the summer, and that starts next week. And we also do provide camp invention across the board, and that will be hosted at LEO again. Again, there's other programs in the community that do target a lot of those things. At the end of the school year, we did send our students with books. We had them all come in by grade level to make sure that they do have books in their hands to take home to read. But anything else that maybe suggestions would be great for all of us to continue to have our kids learning and not have that summer slide, right, and regression?
Good question. Any other questions? And I thank you both.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Andrea Jackson. I have the privilege of serving as principal at Thomas Paine. I'm really excited for this upcoming school year. I've been in this role as assistant principal for the past two years, and so I'm really excited to continue the work that we're doing. So Thomas Paine is currently under renovation, has been for the past two years. And so we use the theme of building a foundation for student success. And with that, we have a phenomenal PBIS coach that used that construction theme throughout the school year. Whenever we had PBIS celebrations, students wore the hard hats and the bright-colored vests and really took pictures and really celebrated them demonstrating those PBIS character traits. Another highlight is that our family engagement events were able to happen. Our Read and Treat, which is a phenomenal event each year, hasn't happened in quite a while, but that went along with our literacy goal, and students came and celebrated, dressed up, and students were being able to read and actually received some free books. And so we were able to get a lot of books in hands of students. And so going along with our goals, we looked at definitely our equity for last year. We noticed that a year ago that race was a huge indicator of that success for academics, and we were disappointed by that. And so this year, we were really happy to see that with our equity goal. In our MAP, fourth grade African-American students actually had a greater rate of growth than their white counterparts, and so that's part of that closing that gap. And in math, our second and third grade African-American students had a higher rate of growth. So we are demonstrating that we're on the right track and making sure that all students are successful. And we chose that particular subgroup because that was the one that MAP kind of indicated was a huge predictor of success. We wanted to make sure that we were mitigating that. Our school improvement team was very intentional, not only just looking at the numbers, but we wanted to really celebrate a lot of the work that we're doing every day to make sure that we are being proactive. And so with literacy, we were happy that we went through a Shifting the Balance book study with Beth Mears in the regional office to do some work around the science of reading and ensure that we're using the most effective resources in teaching practices. And so we strengthened our MTSS process by meeting with teachers monthly and looking at that data and keeping a great pulse on it. So our literacy goal for this year is that when looking at that MAP reading assessment, we will increase the number of first to fifth grade students meeting their projected growth from 26 to 31% when comparing fall 2023 to the spring of the end of the year. And so we used that growth projection. MAP uses growth projection basically saying that students that have that beginning score, if you average that out with the same grade level, same subject, what would that average be? And so we wanted to use that as a good indicator so we're making sure that all students are meeting what they would potentially get, so their own success. Then looking at math, when looking at the math assessment, we will increase the number of kindergarten through fifth grade students meeting their projected growth from 28 to 33% when comparing that, again, fall to spring benchmark. With math, we know that we're getting that new math curriculum, and so we want to build upon that excitement. A lot of our teachers, even though they did not pilot the actual program that we're going to be using in the fall, really benefited from the PD offerings with Janet Moore in going over again those mathematical practices and making sure that we're doing the best that is needed for those students. Ms. Moore actually came into our building, modeled some lessons for teachers, and was able to also observe and actually give those teachers some feedback, and they found that very valuable. The next goal is attendance. And so we're using our Panorama survey data to assess how we're doing with our attendance goal. Panorama puts in those categories of readiness, on track, at risk, and critical. And critical is defined as attending less than 80%. And so with that, our goal is that when using reports from Panorama, we will decrease the number of students in the critical category as shown on the Panorama Student Success Report from 14% to 10% or less by the end of the school year. I think that we have a great team as far as our SEA, our clinical professional, and our social workers that really work together, integrating and making sure that we are looking at any barriers that are impacting students attending. They do home visits, they have families come to the school, and they work really hard to try to mitigate that process. So my hope is that by monitoring this and making sure that it's a goal on our school improvement plan, that we're going to see some success. And then last is our social emotional learning goal. We're going to use our Panorama to kind of gauge that and our data for our social emotional supports for students. Panorama is a benchmark that is three times a year, and our hope is that through using Zones of Regulation, we're going to use some more daily, regular check-ins so that nobody kind of falls under the radar. So even our maybe more internalizing students, making sure that they are being heard and being represented in that data as well. And so I think that that's a better way to kind of be more proactive, and I think that our system will work to make sure that all students feel like they have caring adults in the building. So I'll take any questions.
Board members, any questions? Is there anything tied to your goals or your plans? Is there anything tied to your goals or your planning with regards to the additional students you'll be having next year?
Yeah, so our teachers are working really hard in collaboration with admin just to make sure that we have some welcoming plans. We've already done like a teacher dinner and invited a lot of the wily teachers that were going to be here. And so in regards with families, those plans are in the works to make sure that everybody feels welcome at Thomas Paine.
Any other questions? All right, go ahead, Sheri.
I don't know exactly how to describe this, but I'll start with the premise that I know that all teachers are working very hard to work with every single student so that they make gains. But I was wondering what you attribute the goals, the gains that were made this year with the fourth graders and the third graders at your school who made higher growth.
I think also, so as I was talking about math, a couple of those were teachers that actually were in the pilot program. And even though it wasn't the program that was picked, I do feel that that additional professional development may have helped with that increase.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Furch. I'm the assistant principal at Yankee Ridge, and I am honored on behalf of our staff, our faculty, and our scholars who partner in our work to present our goals for the next school year. So with that, I can echo a lot of the sentiments of my colleagues in regards to programs that we have in place. So you'll hear some similarities. Our first goal is SEL-related, Student Voice in regards to our Panorama. So we're going to increase our favorability rating and social awareness in both kindergarten through second and our third through fifth from the spring of 2023 scores of fifty-five percent to sixty-one percent. And that is based on social awareness, and that is knowing ourself, knowing where our triggers are, where our frustration levels are, seeing that in others, being able to be kind and considerate, showing empathy. We're going to do that through our restorative practices and our year-long kindness campaign. Our second SMART goal is in teaching and learning, and so it focuses on math. Yankee Ridge will increase the amount of scholars making their growth projection in math. Kindergarten through fifth grade scholars will increase meeting their projected growth from twenty-nine percent from spring of 2023 to thirty-four percent in the spring of 2024. That's lofty, but we are going to do that. We made great gains this year in regards to various levels in math, and so we're going to continue the work. Our next goal is our literacy goal. Yankee Ridge will increase the amount of scholars making their growth projection in reading. Our first through fifth grade scholars will increase meeting their projected growth from thirty percent from spring of 2023 to thirty-five percent in 2024. Again, this is lofty, but in regards to our literacy, we did a huge campaign in March, the March Madness or our Hoopla. So our scholars earned our goals. They are our partners in our work. So they set goals, even kindergartners where they looked at where they were and set a goal of where they wanted to be in regards to just looking at the color of the data, whether they wanted to be, you know, from the red to the yellow and then to green. They are our partners in our work, and so they earned extra inflatable time at the end of the school year. And then they also, right? Extra inflatable time, as well as opportunity to see our teachers volunteer to play knockout and root for them, and then the grade levels, you know, battled against each other. So we love that part. We love our March Madness. Our last goal is in regards to attendance. Yankee Ridge will increase scholar attendance, as indicated on Panorama surveys, from eighty-nine percent of the school year from this year, 2022, '23, to ninety-four percent at the end of the school year of '23 and '24 by focusing on culturally welcoming classrooms, incentive programs during our second and third year quarter terms. And so with this, we're really focusing on those healthy habits during our winter. You know, hand washing, our personal hygiene, you know, coughing into our elbows, as well as our healthy habits, what we're eating, how much sleep are we getting? And so again, those partners, and they are able to look at that in themselves. We, as an incentive for our second and third quarter, just gave away bikes. We had skateboards and all kinds of sporty equipment. Play-Doh, you name it, we had it, and they loved to be on time, be at school, and have their name put in the drawing to win those prizes. Our highlights, of course, we are a school with a French dual language program, and so our first grade African American scholars had a higher rate of gain for math than our white scholars. Our first and fifth grade African American scholars had a higher rate of gain than our white scholars in reading. All K-5 scholars set MAP goals for the spring assessment, and we promoted our fifth grade French dual language class for the first time. So now we are a K-5 at French dual language. All right. Our school-wide attendance incentive, I spoke to that. We have a strong foundation in our social emotional learning with Zones of Regulation, our class meetings, our second step. And with that, I ask if you have any questions.
Board members, any questions?
How many students are in the program now, approximately?
The French dual language?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, let's see.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Huh?
I said, sorry to put you on the spot.
Right? And right now, I'm like thinking for next year projections, but.
And next year projections are fine.
Oh, like thirty to forty?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Furch.
Well, you're welcome at Yankee Ridge anytime. Thank you for having us.
So again, just want to thank all the hard work that our school improvement teams have done and our leaders. I am so very proud of all of you. They've worked so hard to gather all this information, collaborate with their teams to get everything prepared for you this evening. Because in addition to this, they were closing out the school year, also all participating in math training with our illustrative mathematics so they could be ready to support all of our educators. So really proud of all the hard work that they're doing, and we're really looking forward to communicating progress with all of our stakeholders along the way. So thank you all very, very much. And also, one more thing. I also have to thank Ms. Kayla Lewandowski as well because we couldn't have done this without her. She has been a huge support for us, so thank you, Christina.
So I do have one more question. Nice for you. So we've heard some wonderful things, that all these plans were, you know, bottom-up, you know, planning was the bottom-up and collaborative ideas per building, you know, attuned to the population in each building. We're one Urbana, but we have different needs in different places. But I was wondering, what processes are in place at Central Office to allow for the sharing of things that are working in each building?
Right, that's a very good question. So some things that we're thinking about for next year as well and also supporting a lot of new administrators, right? So we will be joining those SIP meetings because that's really important, that we are looking at feedback often and really communicating that to all of our stakeholders within our schools, our families, our board, our community. And so that's even going to be part of the umbrella with Program Council. It's really focused on continuous school improvement. So the structure of how those school improvement teams are within the schools will have support from us at all of our schools as well in those spaces. So I hope that answers your question. Yeah.
Anyone else with final opportunity? All right, well, thank you all for a really great report. Our second study topic tonight is a Special Education Student Services update.
All right, Beth Ladd is going to come up and join me for this. I hope she's still here. Okay, sorry, I couldn't see you over there in the corner.
While we're preparing, I'd like to acknowledge a sailor for participating, I say sailor, but seaman, for participating in operating our cameras tonight and inviting the city council for our live feed. So thank you for putting up with all the technical glitches that aren't your fault and getting us back online.
And I think John's getting our slides up, hopefully. That's a great slide, but that's not our slides. As John's pulling that up, I just wanted to mention, so Beth had mentioned that she was ending her time as our Urbana Early Childhood School Principal. And for those that are newer or new to the board, that's because she is going to be our incoming Executive Director of Student Services. As of July one, she will be taking over for me. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing this presentation. So even though you're leaving one position, Beth, you're not leaving it, is that right? Okay, very good. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us time to present tonight, to talk a little bit about student services and special education. Beth and I will be sharing the duties of this presentation tonight. John, if you'd like to advance to the next slide. All right, so I'm going to kick us off by talking a little bit about student services, special education. Our department's focus is on the education of students with disabilities. At the heart of that charge for the education of students with disabilities is the provision of specialized instruction from special ed teachers, as well as related services from special education staff, related service, special education staff. Don't worry, we're going to talk a little bit more about what that means as we go through that. And while it is our charge within student services, special education, to provide that specialized instruction, the responsibility of the education of students with disabilities, students with IEPs, individualized education programs, is the responsibility of all of our educators. As we think about our students and the students we serve, it's a little bit different than our students who do not have individualized education programs, IEPs, who we serve in grades K through twelve. For students with disabilities, we have responsibilities from students who are age three and even students who are younger than three that we do transition services with, and Beth is very aware of that. She was sitting in some IEP meetings today for transition today, I believe. All the way through students, for some students that stay with us through the year, the end of the school year where they turn twenty-two. That rule changed a couple of years ago. It used to be that students could potentially receive services until the day before their twenty-second birthday, and that changed a little bit. And now if their birthday falls during a school year, they can potentially stay with us through the end of that school year. So that's a little bit about our age range that we work with. I'm going to kick it back over to you, Beth, talk a little bit about services and programs.
So under our legal obligation, we're required to provide a continuum of services to our students. You'll hear the term LRE, or least restrictive environment, when considering student services in special education. And all of those decisions are based by an individualized education team that's looking at the students' needs that have been identified through the evaluation process. The continuum of services that we talk about refers to a variety of different things. It can refer to the location of where a student's receiving their services. It can refer to the types of services the students receiving, the amount, the strategies in the curriculum that we are engaging that student in. Where also, a huge component of special education services is not just having an identified disability, but having an educational need for specialized instruction. And so that's what our teachers are doing and should be doing in their instruction with students is engaging them above and beyond their general education core curriculum that they receive from their general education teachers and specializing based on the needs that we've identified. And so here's just a variety of examples of what we mean by services and continuum of services. We have students eligible for services under a speech-language eligibility who are receiving thirty to sixty minutes a week of instruction, all the way on up to students who are placed through the schools or families in residential placements in or out of the state. There's a wide variety of services, and for the number of students we have, you'll see that many number of individualized plans for our students.
So when we talk about eligibility for services under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act or when a student has an individualized educational program, it is a categorical system, which means you need to meet eligibility criteria for one or more of these fourteen different disability areas up here. As you kind of take a quick look at this list here, you know, some of these disabilities involve sensory-based disabilities. Some involve students' academic or behavioral, socio-emotional, or functional performance. Some involve more specific medical conditions. These disability areas are broadly defined at the federal level and the state level, and then it's up to each individual district to come up with an operationalized eligibility criteria for each of these. And there's a team process where we use our professionals to go through, do assessments, determine eligibility, and develop a plan. So these are our fourteen disability areas that students might potentially receive services under. And John, if you'd like to go to the next slide. We just put up a quick slide here on of our students with disabilities. All of them have a primary disability area, one of those fourteen there. This gives you an idea of who our students are or what disability area they qualify under if they have a disability. So you'll see specific learning disability, and that's typically in the areas of reading, math, or written expression, or any one of those three or all of those. That's about a third of our students, thirty-five percent. About twenty percent of our students with IEPs have a primary disability where they have a speech or language impairment. They may have articulation disorders. They may have expressive or receptive language delays, those kind of things. Our third largest is autism. We do tend to run just a little bit above state average in autism. That's twelve percent of our population. We have three disability areas there, all very similar in how often they occur, and that's emotional disability, developmental delay, and other health impairment. Students with intellectual disabilities make up about five percent of our student populations, and the rest of those fourteen are very low incidence disabilities and make up about two percent of our population.
Can I interject with a question real quick?
Yeah.
So just kind of curious what the assessment process is and how our students are selected for assessment?
Yeah, so there's a variety of ways that happens. They may be referred by their teacher or parent for a disability. They may be, as we go through our benchmarking process and some of the assessments that we talk about, they may be scoring low on an assessment. At the elementary level, we have problems, at all levels, we have problem-solving teams, but we're continuously looking at data, providing interventions, and making referrals through a variety of processes. Yeah.
Another thing of note, when you're looking at these primary disabilities, for all areas of disability except developmental delay, you could be found eligible any time between three and twenty-two. Developmental delay stops at the age of nine. That's a unique category, and that one varies from state to state more than the other eligibility areas.
Tori, do you have a question?
How do we compare? I noticed you said that we were a little higher on the autism.
It's a couple of percentage.
What about the others?
Yeah, most of them are within a couple of percentage points. Another one we're a little bit higher than state average is emotional disability. One of the reasons for that, I would say, is we talked about Gerber School. Gerber School has about forty students. Most of those have emotional disabilities. Most districts don't have a program like that. Those students are placed there from outside the district, so that tends to have us be a little bit higher in that disability area. But we're fairly close on state averages on most of these.
And Paul, to go back to your question around the assessment process, so there's a term called Child Find that we as a district and all district employees have to identify and evaluate students that are suspected of having a disability. And so we discuss that quite a bit in terms of ensuring that all of our staff and administrators understand their accountability to Child Find. And in looking at early childhood, we're talking about Child Find for students that aren't in our schools. And so working with our community partners to make. And so working with our community partners to make sure that families, doctors, anybody in the community understands that, that we're there to make sure that if they have a student with a disability, we'll walk them through that process and, and serve them as their three and four-year-olds.
I think Sherri had a question real quick.
Through your tenure, have you seen these numbers change through the years that you've been here?
They have not changed significantly. This is, I, I would say this breakdown has, has pretty much, in the 12 years I've been here, pretty, pretty close to this.
And the numbers of the students as well?
Oh, yeah. So that, that's our next slide.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a little data on the next slide, I think on the last six years, if you want to, if you want to increment there. So we have typically run about 16 to 18% of our student population having qualifying for IEPs. To give you numbers, that, that's about 750 to 800 students or so of our, of our student population. You'll see a little dip in there. That's, that's a COVID dip there. Our, our total student population went down during COVID, and it went down even more for our students with disabilities. And to me, probably that's attributable to the difficulty with remote learning for students with disabilities. That was probably more difficult than, than neurotypical students.
I think it also became difficult to fulfill our obligation for Childfind.
Correct.
With, with instruction and access to education being what it was during those years.
I will say, you know, we talk a little bit about state averages. We also run, state averages are about 15 to 16%. We do run a little bit higher than that. When Beth and I talked about that a little bit, again, Gerber raises our percentage a little bit. I would say our early childhood programming probably raises that a little bit too, because we have a very robust early childhood program, probably a bigger early childhood program than a lot of school districts. And they work very hard at Childfind, working with early intervention and our community partners to make sure we're identifying students who may have disabilities. And I don't know that that's as true everywhere.
So this slide is, I just think extremely important to, to recognize and remember that while we have an amazing and dedicated special education staff, the education of our students who have been identified really is the responsibility of all staff in all of our buildings. And so that's just, I think, really critical for us to remember that we are here to support students to make progress in their general education curriculum. And so we have a variety of staff in our special ed department who are doing that. We have special education teachers. We have multiple related service providers, occupational therapy assistants, occupational therapy, occupational therapists is what I was trying to say there, physical therapists, social workers. Somebody's going to watch me and I'm going to have forgotten their role. But lots of different support staff and teaching assistants, supporting our students in lots of different ways. We also have additional programs in a, in a few of our buildings that are not available in all buildings, but serve students from all buildings. And that's very typical of districts, no matter their size, that there are district-wide programs that serve students in one space. And so you heard earlier from some of the principals who talked about some of their programs. Yankee Ridge has our intensive instructional program, which is serving students with emotional disabilities and other disabilities that are impacting their social-emotional interactions and, and growth. Thomas Payne serves our cross-categorical program. In Urbana, the cross-categorical term has really centered around a more self-contained program for students with a variety of disabilities who need extra support across many, many domains. In other districts, cross-categorical term is used differently, so that's just something to keep in mind. But we also have life skills programs that cross all of our elementary, middle, and high school programs as well, and our young adult program that's based at the high school at this point. And here are the numbers of special education staff we have. And as you look at these, I, I believe these numbers represent people who are serving in those roles right now. We also have several positions that have not been filled by licensed staff who are being served by substitute teachers in certain spaces and substitute teaching assistants. But a lot of dedicated staff in this district who have been here for many years, who are new to the field, who come here to really support all of our students.
All right, the next couple of slides are mine, and it, this, to me, kind of dovetails nicely into some of our conversations that our, our elementary and other principals had talked about a little bit. This is some of our Illinois Assessment of Readiness data from the 21-22 school year for reading, English language arts on the left side, math on the right side. This, these are proficiency levels on the IAR. It's a five-point scale. To be considered proficient, you need a four or five on there. What, what, when I look at this, this data, you know, this shows us that, you know, at the state level, that the levels of proficiency are fairly low overall at about 29%, and our district average is quite a bit below that. And, and the pattern is similar for math overall. And then our students with disabilities taking the test are, are lagging even further behind that. So in terms of proficiency levels, that is an, you know, that's an area, it's an indicator, moving forward, of the need for additional work and the reason why we do all the planning we do. And if you want to move to the next slide here, so proficiency is one piece, and then growth, growth is another piece. And you heard our principals talk a lot about growth here. So this is Illinois Assessment of Readiness Growth data here. And, and again, these growth percentiles, when we look at this, this guy, this represents students' growth over time on, on a test on the IAR, one year to the next year, taking the student's starting level into account, and then looking at the rate they're growing. So you really want growth percentiles above 50%. And if you're, if, if we're not there, then students aren't growing at the rate they need to be growing to make good progress. And again, our, our growth percentiles are below state average for all of our students and are also lagging behind for students with disabilities. There's a lot of things to attribute this to. We could talk for a long time about that. Part of this is, you know, COVID effect. Part of this is, you know, hopefully looking, when we look at our 22-23 data, all the great work that has been done in the district, we'll see some, some additional bounce on that. But to me, and, and I think to us as we look at this, these will be areas of focus for equity work moving forward, our curriculum work moving forward, and this, this just shows us that we, we have work to do, and the time is now to do that work.
Can I ask a quick question here, Todd?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
She, yeah, the, the students that take the Illinois Assessment Ready are students in grades three through eight.
So does the state, when it presents its data on these percentages, does it also have like disaggregation by socioeconomic level?
They do. They, they disaggregate it about every way you could possibly think.
So how do we compare with districts of comparable socioeconomic?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't, I, I don't know that I have that data.
Thanks.
You can always look at school report cards too, if you want to dig further. We can do that as well.
All right, so, you know, that's a little sobering, kind of looking at that data, but we own our data. We look at it, and it gives us a path forward. So I wanted to take just a minute to talk, this is, this is, this is my favorite slide here. These are some things we're proud of. We're going to talk some things we're proud of and some things we have, we had some work to do on. One of the things we're proud of in the last five years is the development of our Pathways Program. Through that program, we've supported about 15 teachers to, who had general education, classroom teacher licenses, get their certification to be a special education teacher. The way that worked is in, in exchange for us paying for them to take the coursework to become special education teachers, they agreed to work for us for three years as special education teachers. One of the things we looked for, I would say we were fairly selective in who we looked for under those programs. We looked for individuals that had some kind of connection to students with special needs or disabilities. Some of them may have been special ed teaching assistants before they got their general education teaching certification. Some of them may have had a master's degree in reading. They may have worked at alternative programs like Ready. They may have had bilingual proficiency in, in Spanish and English. So really look for that kind of connection for that, that has helped us fill some teacher roles. We've had some great success stories with our pathway program teachers. That sub-bullet under there that says uncertain, uncertain whether ISB will allow this type of program in the future. The, the certification alternative program that, that goes along with this was set to sunset this summer. The good news is Beth and I have heard from some regional offices of education, some of our colleagues, that this is being extended through 2026. It actually now says that on the ISB website. Now, I haven't got any official notification, but we're taking it as a good sign that they've updated that. So we will be able to continue that, that option moving forward. I would be remiss if I didn't mention our high-quality, state-recognized, inclusive early childhood programs. You know, Beth and her predecessors and all our hard-working staff at early childhood should be very proud of the way they provide services for students with disabilities in an inclusive setting. That is not true everywhere, and that is just the way we do things here, something to be proud of. Another thing we're proud of is our responsiveness to our teachers. Our teachers did come to us this year asking for additional time to work on IEP curriculum-related issues, time for collaboration outside of the school day, time for, to ask us questions and get professional development and support. So we set aside a four-hour block once a month for them to come in, come in for any time during that four hours. We did it actually at early childhood. We had a great turnout, probably 30 to 40 teachers showed up at each of those times, did it on a monthly basis. It was so successful, we actually worked it into our contract, so we will be doing that again in the future. We're also proud of our commitment to having bilingual staff at all levels. We have bilingual school psychologists, social workers, teaching assistants. I say special education teachers already, maybe I did, but we do have bilingual teaching and instructional staff at all levels. Always need more, but we have made a commitment to make sure that we are, you know, supporting having those roles. We also are proud of the fact that we are extending our teaching assistant calendar for the upcoming school year. One example of that is when you have our elementary school improvement days where you don't have students in session. That, in the past, has not been a teaching assistant workday. Next year, it will be. So they will participate in professional development, work alongside us. In a likewise, at the beginning of the year, they will be attending our professional development day. So that'll allow more time for collaboration and professional development for our teaching assistants. And then lastly, I'll just say, you know, like many districts, we've had turnover in our special ed staff, but we are very proud of our committed special ed staff that has stuck with us, have worked hard. We couldn't do any of it without them, so we are, we are very thankful for the special education staff that we have.
So I believe this is intentional, that I have the concerns and challenges slide, as this will be the work that I'm doing over the next several years. And obviously, and just looking at that brief snapshot of our outcome data for our students, it is something that we should be concerned about. I think there are multiple factors involved in why our data is the way it is. Student need has increased significantly over the last several years. Ensuring that our students are receiving high-quality core instruction in reading and math and writing is a huge component to making sure that our students in special education are making the progress that they need to. And that is a real significant issue in thinking about how much time we have in a day to engage in core instruction and additional special education services. And so having to really be mindful of that, making sure they have access to their general education teacher. And then making sure that our specialized instruction is specialized instruction, and that we are not just providing tutoring or additional support aligned to and, too similar to the general education curriculum, but looking at evidence-based additional instructional strategies that help students close that achievement gap. Staffing, there won't be a time in the near future where we aren't talking about this as a significant factor for us. Something I'm concerned greatly about, even before I start, is making sure we have high-quality staff and teachers. And so just been a lot of intentional conversations with all of our building administrators around what, what candidates they're looking at, who they're interviewing, how we're recruiting. This is a, an issue for everybody, and we're all just going to continue to steal staff from each other. You made a, a great effort with our new contract to financially and climate-wise reinforce attracting new, new teachers and staff to our district. And so hopefully we'll see that impact. But this is just really, unfortunately, in my opinion, the beginning of some staffing crisis in our, our schools in this country that will need some dramatic changes to our educational system before we see a solution actually occur. We just continue to have a need for professional development, making sure that our staff are receiving the professional development that's provided to all general education teachers, so they have an understanding of what's happening in, in the core grade-level instruction, but also supplementing that with what's needed to make sure that they are growing themselves personally in terms of what specialized instruction is, how to be legally compliant. And then, you know, you've heard it from multiple families and community members over the last several months at board meetings here. We are in a space of distrust and concern from our community over the services we're providing to our students. And so we need to really rebuild and strengthen those relationships, and that's obviously a huge priority for us moving forward. And so we have operated with a special education parent advisory committee over the last several years. Just go with several, four or five. And over time, it's had some more successes than we've seen recently. Obviously, COVID hit, and we had some difficulty in, in pulling people together. We saw some increased success with some Zoom participation. But most recently, it, it has not been a space that has been working effectively to meet the needs of bridging that gap between the community and our families and our staff. And so we're really looking at adjusting that, revisiting what that could look like, and strengthening that in a way that really is collaborative and problem-solving to meet the needs of our community. And so, moving forward, I was tasked with, when I interviewed for this position, proposing a five-year plan. And so there were several areas that I thought were really important for us to focus on. For those of you who weren't here when I was initially hired, I have actually served in the Special Education Department in Urbana previously, under Todd as the Assistant Director. I've also been a special ed administrator in Champaign and in Indianapolis, and then also an elementary building principal. And so I think there's a lot of unique perspectives that I bring in terms of supporting our building leaders and recognizing all that they do in a day, and yet making sure we're prioritizing our students and families of students with disabilities. And so to be very blunt, we have some legal compliance issues and some accountability across all levels. And so we've already been talking, excited to bring Maria Elvira on board and keep Katie Madigan in her role as a special ed facilitator, and creating some simple, manageable levels of accountability from district directors and, and superintendents, all the way down through teaching assistants in terms of what's, some of our expectations are for serving our students. We really need to do a deep dive into our instructional practices. I think there's always pendulums in education, swinging back and forth, and always different directions we're moving. And so I think as we prioritized making sure that our students were receiving core instruction and accessing their grade-level curriculum, we forgot a component of what we do is to provide specialized instruction. And so I think, and, and I'm not speaking about just here in Urbana, I'm just speaking about in general. And I think one of the things we need to go back to is some basic work around what our specialized instruction can look like without replicating or focusing entirely on the general education curriculum, because that's what our general education teacher has the expertise in, and our special education staff need to go back to really looking at what we can do to supplement that. Communication is going to be a huge priority, making sure that we are acknowledging and recognizing the things that are going well. Paul, you asked this earlier, making sure we're identifying those and sharing those across all of our buildings and spaces. across all of our buildings and spaces, but also making sure that we are communicating where we are in terms of some of the struggles we're facing and how we're addressing those. And so the work we have ahead of us is going to take a significant amount of time, and so while we're doing that work and waiting for the results of that, we have to communicate some really specific ways in which we are moving towards what we hope to see eventually. And then retention and recruitment, obviously, is a, is a huge factor in making sure that we have the staff we need to support our students and families. And it's real intentional to me that we're talking about retaining our current staff who are doing the amazing work and then recruiting after that, because otherwise, we're always recruiting. If we don't focus on that retention, it's a never-ending process.
Board members, any questions? Okay, I guess I have one real quick. I mean, let's say, what happens from a parent's perspective, I guess, when their child is diagnosed with an issue and then they're put on an IEP? Is there something that's done, I guess, to educate the parents with regards to their rights and responsibilities? And if they have a conflict with regards to a, to a staff member following an IEP plan, what their course of action is to get that addressed?
I'll speak to what should be happening and maybe isn't happening in every space. And, you know, especially now having been at, at early childhood, when you're seeing parents walk into the educational realm, oftentimes potentially for the first time. And our job as special education staff in those very first initial meetings we're having with families where we're talking about special education eligibility, we have a legal obligation to ensure that they understand their rights and the process. And I think it's critical that we're really specific about articulating that this process is related to special education services and eligibility, that there's a legal component to this that we're obligated to follow, that these are not just our practices and procedures, but there are, you know, we're following what's prescribed to us through federal law and then Illinois State Board of Education. At every initial meeting in a school year, we are required to share with families the many document, page document that describes their rights as a, as a parent entering that, that world of special education. Oftentimes, we summarize what that is. We're obligated to make sure that parents understand that, that they have access to that. Anytime a parent is unhappy or has concerns with us, we should be bringing up that document and those rights that they have. And just as, as a personal example, several years ago, actually, here in Urbana, we had a family that was extremely unhappy with us and wanted to file due process, because we did not agree on what the plan was going to be for that child. I helped that parent personally file due process with us because that is the right thing to do. It's a very difficult system to manage, but we have a legal obligation to do that. Do I want a family to file due process on us? Absolutely not. Did we end up going through mediation and finding a resolution to the problem? Yes. But I supported that family through that process to complain about me personally and our process. That's what we need to be doing to support our families. Many families have a great understanding of the school system, and many families don't. And so we have to meet them wherever they are to make sure that they understand what they can do when things aren't going well.
Thank you very much. It was a comprehensive answer. Anyone else have a question? All right, all right, thank you both.
I could do a third presentation tonight if anybody's interested. No?
Not, not tonight.
Not tonight?
All right, there will, there is no call for future special or executive meetings. Our superintendent's report.
Hi. All right, so next week, I have the pleasure of taking a group of Urbana High School students. I may have a couple of middle school students that I'm, that will join us, but right now I have about 10 to 12 Urbana High School students who are going to be participating in an SEL Growing Leadership Day of Learning at the I Hotel. This is sponsored by the Regional Office of Education. We have several teachers who are going to be participating on June 13th and 14th, and then the 14th, the regional office set up a student leadership focus. And so I sent this out to our current student ambassadors, our future student ambassadors, and then I have a group that I tap into throughout the year that I kind of call my student, Superintendent Student Advisory Group. So there were about 30 students who received this invite, and I'm really pleased that we have right now 10 and two that are trying to work out schedules that can go, so there'll be at least 10 to 12 of us there. And they're really looking forward to an opportunity to just have a day of learning and talking about what it means to be a leader. So the focus of the day will be about being a leader at your school, social-emotional learning. It's called the Habitu, Habitudes, which is kind of a social-emotional curriculum. And as I said, we have several teachers that are going to be learning about it for those two days, but I'm, I'm really pleased to have some students that can benefit in this opportunity, so I just want to share that. I hope you've seen, we've been trying to get the advertisement and the word out in the community. I saw it on WCIA yesterday, I think it's been in the News Gazette, but we're really trying to make sure that families know that summer meals have started. So that started on Monday. You don't have to be an Urbana School District student to benefit in coming to the school and getting a meal on-site. So we've been trying to get the word out for this every year. This, to me, is such a huge benefit for our families, but we don't have enough people take advantage of it. So this year, I know we've been putting it on Facebook and lots of different spaces. The schools have flyers hanging up, up through the end of the year, but I really want our families to know whether you have food insecurity issues or not. You are welcome to come and have breakfast or lunch at any of the sites that we are serving where we have programming happening. So at King, UMS, Leo, UHS. So not every school. If the school isn't open for a summer program, then we aren't offering meals there, but any school that is open and available, please come and get free meals. Online registration, as you know, we were really incentivizing families up through the end of the year, giving out prizes. We gave away a couple laptops for people who went in and registered. So now it is crunch time, because once the summertime comes, people kind of forget about this until August. So please, 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 if you have not registered yet, we're going to be sending out reminders throughout the summer. The deadline for students that are returning is July 27th. Any families or parents or public people watching this, remember if you do not pre-register online, it can impact your ability to have transportation if you are a first student or yellow bus rider. So we really want to encourage, not for the year, I mean, just for like the first week or so of school, because it does take a few days for us to get everyone on the routes. We really would like to be able to develop routes with a robust listing of students. It's really hard when we create the bus routes, and then we have a whole bunch of people come in and register the last couple of days of school, and then we're calling families and saying, "Sorry, your time for your pickup and drop-off have changed." So we really, we started this early for a reason, because we really don't want to be August 1st or the couple of days before school with, you know, 20, 30, 40% of our families not registered yet. So if you know someone or if you yourself have not registered, please, it doesn't take very long, and it is a fairly quick process, go in there and get that done for us. And physicals, again, there is a lot of information on the website for our early childhood program students, kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade. These are compulsory physicals. It isn't an optional thing, and districts don't get a choice of whether or not we accept this information, we're required to by the state. So we definitely hate to exclude students, but when the exclusion dates come at the beginning of the year, we're required to do this. So it's really helpful if families plan ahead. Get your physical appointments scheduled today, whether you're at Carl, OSF, Promise, wherever you may be, School-Based Health Center. We'll take all of our students as a walk-in. So please, 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 get those dental and physical exams in. As all of the principals here talk tonight about absenteeism and how much not being in school impacts your learning, when we have students sitting at home because they're non-compliant for physicals and vaccines, it is really, really hard on their learning. So parents, please plan ahead, use the School-Based Health Center, that's what it's there for, and get your physicals scheduled and done this summer. The school district, again, and all offices and businesses, well, at least Illinois businesses, are closed for Juneteenth on, I think it's a Monday this year, right? Monday the 19th. We are closed, as well as the rest of the state, and we always look forward to being out in King Park for Jettie Rhodes Day on June 24th. So we'll be out there with a couple of tents and celebrating with the rest of the community.
Board reports. Anybody have a board report tonight? Go ahead, share.
Yeah, I'm happy to announce that the Urbana Pops Orchestra, which has been associated with the Urbana School District since it began in 2010, will have a free concert this Saturday, June 10th at 7:00 p.m. at the High School Auditorium, and it's entitled Happily Ever After. And if you're not familiar with the Urbana Pops Orchestra, its goals are to perform high-quality light classical and pops repertoire for free and to provide a setting for young, talented, young musicians, students, to learn from seasoned professional musicians, so I encourage you all to go.
You beat me to it. My son's playing in that, so thank you. I will. Any other board reports? I'll add one real quick. So at our next meeting, we deferred a decision to appoint somebody to be a member of a delegate assembly at the next ISB, or Triple ICA convention in November. So be prepared to, for somebody to, you know, be willing to do that. You're pointing at me. And outside of that, it's, we had our last board meeting before our July break, so what we did have done the past few years is we've come to that meeting in, during the board report session to discuss study topics you want to add to our calendar for the next year and to begin thinking about spitballing goals you want to set as a board, for the board to accomplish over the next year, just to start that conversation. And then when we come back again in August, we can get those finalized. So just come prepared. Anyone else? If there's nothing else, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm a little for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, everybody. We're done relatively early, I guess, compared to the last couple of meetings.